All right, we're ready. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everybody to our July 10th Commissioners' Court meeting. Let's the record reflect that we have a forum. Commissioner Mars is down and Commissioner Back to Natalie is down. We do have a forum. I want to call the meeting in order. Ask that you please stand and join us in the question of allegiance to the Constitution.
Praise the Lord to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we represent, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I declare, Praise the Lord to God, the United States of Texas, one state, unencumbered,
Almighty God, we thank you for your many blessings and benefits. We thank you, Lord, for your provision. We thank you, Lord, for your protection. And we thank you, Lord, for our first responders in our hour of need. God, we ask you to be our guide and our companion as the Commissioners' Court is conducted today. And we thank you for all that are here, and we ask your blessings on each and every individual. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bead.
Any more further comments? Mr. Bead, or you could've just kept the microphone. Go ahead, sir. Your Honor, it's been a while since the SV-22 grant has been brought up. And in the interim, the Sheriff's Office has been bled. Their personnel has found other areas. The SV-22 grant was supposed to fill the gap for the Sheriff's Office where they were able to give applicable raises, and that is in black and white. And for the life of me, I cannot understand why that isn't fully understood. And so that they could likewise hire new people. They could if they're in need of equipment. They would have the equipment. But for some strange reason, Commissioners' Court has chosen to put the $330,000 that remains out of the grant of $350,000 into a capital fund. And we haven't heard any more about them. In the meantime, the community is at risk because we don't have adequate control and we don't have, it's my understanding, I guess nothing whatsoever has been done in regards to the communications for the county. It seems like that we're waiting forever for somebody to make decisions in debt colic for monies that was promised to this county. And it's always forthcoming, 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 but it hasn't arrived. Something needs to be done instead of that money just staying in the account and drawing interest for the county. If you were in the position of our honorable Sheriff, you would fully understand. And, Your Honor, you've been over to the Sheriff's Office and you've seen the communications dilemma. And why are we at the same place that we have been for the last several months? That is my question. And when are you going to act and when are you going to release the funds that the Sheriff has that is due yet?
Thank you, Mr. Bead. Anybody else?
Out of number five, announcement possible discussion of items of public community interest to which no action will be taken. Glad to see there's trucks from far off as Arkansas, and we are finally getting some relief. Sheco, I know it's frustrating for everybody not to have power, but they've been working like bees eighteen hours a day, and they're making progress. This storm is just, for a tropical storm, is something I've never seen before. I think they're, Sheco, some of y'all may remember back in Reno, every single meter that they had was not running at town. As far as the work around here, they set up a tent city at the fairgrounds, about an acre size tent, and that's where all those guys will stay. I think they're, I'm told that they're setting that up at the high school, Coe Springs High School. So just be patient, there is, things are being done, it's just a massive, let me take it. Let me see. We put out a star request to have some food, marine type things, water and ice, and the request was denied for yesterday. They're supposed to be setting up a pod. The first lot is supposed to be going to Shepherd down there, the city. I don't know if they've actually arrived this morning yet or not. That wasn't yesterday. I thought that was different. That's what was spoke, but I don't know if it's actually happened. Good, 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 good. I don't know that there's any, if they're still down there, if you need water or ice. And they're supposed to be bringing some for this end of the county today. We've got Commissioners who brought equipment to unload the trucks, and that's supposed to be happening today. Commissioner Tuno hired to set up for tomorrow. You don't know until they actually grow up there.
Mary Woods is gonna handle it. Are y'all still out of electricity? Mark?
There's Lockman. We don't have any.
Y'all have any?
We haven't seen trucks over there.
Mark, when did yours come on this corner?
Yesterday. Of course, we had all the work involved, and we went out there and checked it. Sometime you had like four, five.
We're on the same feed, and I don't have any.
Really?
No, I don't think you get it. You had the trucks over there.
When the lights got turned off at jail, had, the generator came right on, but had problems with some trench door switches or whatever. And they're back into the jail. It took a little effort to get that lined out, and that's got everybody, because you know, you're talking about pitch black in the back, heated gas back there. Anyway, they got that lined out.
Right now, Commissioner Tuno and I are probably only, you'll notice with the county departments and sheriff departments, both county sources, if the county, this county might bend back to the rust on the field for everybody.
Yeah, we were out on this personal field, but we had fire.
We were out yesterday, and I called Jim Lockman, and he said, "The truck's coming at five o'clock."
That's right.
Yeah.
We've had lots of disasters here in the past. First one, I was really, well, not the first one, but back in Reno, the first call I got, tree fell on the path, black field, a little bit, well, unfortunately, fell down there on, I believe, Beacon Road or Bridge County. Frank Drinson, I believe, lost his life seventy-three years old. Tree fell on the, anyway, think about anything to do on the first. Sorry to report that. All right, if not, we'll move on to item number ten. Consideration discussion thought the vote approved Suffolk Precipent Agreement for Tedom Administration Grant Awards. Last week, Tedom sent me, we filed our application for relief regarding the flooding of events. And the document is, I had to think stick. Probably disaster times and years past, they send these, and I probably just signed to that. We're meeting next week. I told them, they want us to sign this along with a bunch of other paperwork that we have to send in for grants, some tax paperwork, and I like a bunch of pieces. Second, I have the same paperwork, but I guess they tweaked some of the language in here. We have to do this every time, but in order to them to process us, I have to get this approved and then send it up to Tedom through the portal. And then, that time came back though, because that's hard to send it through the portal if you don't have a computer in. I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Tuno. I thought it should get me a stamp today, but if you're gonna do anything, that's what 's the way. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, two numbers three, zero. So normally I put myself, primary, I think I put, this should be the same as what I've already designated on Turo. Since she's handling the most of the Commissioners' projects, I'm gonna put her name there, my name here, Marjorie's name, the finance. That suits you, Ms. Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll get ready after debating and then clear it up. A little bit of blanks to, you're gonna do it right now. Refresh your training. I sent Karen out for the refresh your training tour. All right. Oh, okay. Yeah, we did have a, check on again. Item number eleven, consideration discussion thoughtful. Wait. I made a promise. Thirteen, consideration discussion thought the vote approved prepared for fire alarm at the shelter using Summit Fire and Security LOC installation in the amount of $3,083. Did he walk in?
No.
There he is. He moved front and center. So there's a fire? Did that happen there? I'm guessing when lightning struck the parking lot and fried a lot of the electrical, that's probably when that happened.
That's what I was saying.
So. That, I don't know. It's $3,000 bill, deductible on insurance, probably $4,000. We had other damages, though. We could put it all into one claim, though. We might get past our deductible this week.
We had that panel on there, too.
We had a panel, and then we spent like five grand because it smoked the water heater, the hot water heater system, too. That's just the way I'm thinking. If it was all, now, if that happened before, obviously, we'd be wanting to work, but that's all that we're talking. Anybody here from the office? Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just talking out loud about how we might recoup some of it. Was this the same quote that Dadeham had?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner, I was running out of things to say, Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Tuno. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, two numbers three, zero. Is that the only thing you got? Let me get shot with the second. Eighteen. for replacement of entire AC unit number three, $17,144 to replace only compressor on AC number three for $4,549 on the, at the shelter. Is that the last time? I thought, we had a public meeting, I thought, everyone.
That's the current.
The compressor's out.
That's the third compressor in that year. They've already replaced it twice. I look back in the books, and it's been replaced twice, and they won't, we got to replace it again. So we've already got almost fifteen thousand dollars in that.
You know, I one time, bowled forward one time, and I ended up having to keep replacing this and this. After about the third time, you replace the carburetor stem.
The way TDC and schools do it, once you reach seventy-five percent of the cost of that.
How many tons a unit is that?
I don't, I'll tell you.
Well, it's a package unit, it's a self-contained package unit, I believe. Is it not?
Is it what?
Is it a package unit? Two compressors in it?
No, no, the compressors are sick. They don't have anything to do with the blowers and stuff.
But that's two compressors in it?
Yes. And one's out. And we've already replaced it. This'll be the third one.
They all can make microphones, right? I say, man, there's technology, we, that old apartment, that's what we put in there. We put a unit to recover two in one compressor. You have the money? You have the supply?
I have a lot, not seventy-two. I mean, they can do it, but it's gonna take a bit of time.
Where, where are, is this all the bids you got?
Yeah.
Can we authorize purchasing them? See if we can. Where'd you get the bid from?
Dragon. Everybody else, we've been getting bids from, been ironing.
Well, I'd like to see the bids, you know, personally. I, I replaced the units of my house in town a couple of years ago. I had all the local guys bid, and they were about twelve. I got a bid for about eight. That was two units, but it's not this. I mean, I'm just telling you.
Well, I know we've spent almost $15,000 of that particular unit. And once you reach fifty to seventy-five.
I'm not saying we've spent over $50,000 this year on air condition, so we'd be okay to not go out and bid, because it's always a great idea. Someone said, yeah, to get, yeah, to get two or three prices.
Those are very complex units out there. There's two compressors, and a huge part of it is a hot gas.
I don't mean it was what I do of compressors work, but.
I actually tell you how those work.
I don't care how they work, long as they work, but that don't mean we're not gonna try to get some prices.
I'm asking you, just to take a look at the quote. I would like to look at it myself, and I could look at that unit, and I think it is tied in incorrectly on the compressors. I could be wrong.
Could be, but it's blowing compressors.
I've been there about.
How many compressors have you linked?
One.
Been there eight years.
Luckily, we didn't have any.
No.
And I've been in there.
That is, Ben, that's what they have. I'm not gonna argue with you, man.
Just like the elevator up there, Mark, they really need surge protectors.
Surge protectors by all means, that's what's, that could stop them from getting fried.
He, John, it won't be because electric comes, just like over there at the shelter, I mean, at the jail, those generators, those transfer switches are out right now, and I'm telling you, it was from the power surge bit. They're not gonna bid that, but I'm telling you, if we had blown that gate, that man, such, our city sergeants through there, they'd borrow both veterans versus, they'll see more of them. You'll see more of them. I've already talked to the auditors about that, because that, should we, we can be able to do that on our own.
Do you have a lot of spec sheet or something? We ought to at least get three quotes.
I'll have this, this, yes. I just take them, see if they got any more quotes in.
I didn't wanna ask you. You got something that says what we're gonna be looking for?
Yeah, it should be, but it's a DB.
I didn't ask you how many tons and all that.
I agree with that.
Man, if we're gonna try to get a price, you gotta tell them what you want.
Yeah, he matched this, be the same ton as there.
Probably the same, yeah.
Yeah. We called other business, but now the votes are.
Nobody's.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. It's always smart to.
And we did call, but nowadays, man, it's hard to get anybody to bid.
This is what I'm talking about, see, we're talking apples and oranges. I'm just talking about two, three tons. This is a commercial line, twelve and a half ton package unit, gas heat, fourteen I E E R, ten point eight E E R. Seems a little low these days.
The ton?
Oh, the I E E R.
Scare?
Scare.
Scare.
Probably should say scare.
Stop being in that commercial stuff, they don't really see your much like that.
Yeah, it's a lot there, you know, that was.
I was thinking it was fifteen.
That's what it, it might be, but this is what it is for twelve and a half tons.
I'm sure that matters, though. Because I thought, I need the same thing we got, we don't have that much more. But I, you know, we're still waiting, so if we get more bids in, it's hard to get anybody to bid. And something else, just so you know.
What's happening with it right now, it seems like it's doing the job.
Just more compressors.
I already guess that's just the thing. And if that goes out, people are telling me that. In this one, the back of the jail filled off, that's gonna have to be done on the engineer's deal.
Yeah, that's different, that'd be a different plan.
Now, it'd be the same thing for those, in my book.
Trans, yeah, that's transfer. The roofing deal was from, this recent, went into, yeah, but some of that other stuff was from the flood stuff.
No, I think the, the two, the transfer switches went out that day.
Yeah, maybe they did. So what does the Hulston have transfer switches?
I don't know. I got people trying to get this.
You're right, you're right, that's, that is the same.
So I'm thinking engineers gonna be able to take care of that. I don't know if we can get.
We still have some obligations to try to get this to the end. I mean, can we get a motion to set up, set up a max and then tell him to get a couple quotes?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd just like him to say three quotes and use the cheaper than three. Let him be an apple out.
Turn that into a motion, please, if you're ready.
An motion would be for you to get three bids and use the cheaper than three bids.
Okay. Now, motion by Commissioner Tuno, second by Commissioner Brandon, three quotes.
The cheaper bid.
Cheaper, I was struggling for another word.
Economy of cost of living.
The most cost you've ever been for, that you do.
As long as they're out of that.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, two numbers three, zero. Hey, I'll get you a number till God hustle.
Okay. Just take it, or something.
I got, I got, this guy saved in a lot of money, but he may not deal with this guy.
Takes me.
He ain't related to me or nothing. I don't even know where he lives. Out of number. Eleven. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve rehire of police civilian into permanent part-time pimping position. This is the term actions, virtual by FEMA to. You asking us if we're, uh, because she just worked for us and. I wouldn't think it'd take thirty seconds to get a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion, but I'm gonna have one more special.
I got a motion by Commissioner Mattoon. I believe I have a second by Commissioner Brandon. Any discussions?
Yeah, uh, and it's just not that way. It's about the twelve six. I don't know. When you look at our Southern V D rules here, remember before we had the discussion, we have about have in the April bill, we have to go in there, I think he's formed a fifty percent rule. But that's what this is about, going inherently on a substantial air congestion and everything. And we can actually go out and have FEMA arrive, and I'm assuming that's what you got in mind, release this plan of time as high project. We can also go out and contract.
Is either guy that spoke up in conference call about that? She made it?
Yeah, well, G R I control six gives you six months window to do that. You know, so we, there's companies out there, and I was actually talking to him, yes.
Oh, that's a company?
That's what they do. And these guys, we are, yeah, and these guys here, they are C P S, which is what you need. Uh, they work for team, they work for family, they get their steam, they gather stuff.
So what is it they do?
They do this twelve oh six program. And they can act, they can do all of it. They're, they're all, they used to do two dollars per feet.
You start talking about being an auditor.
Well, that's why you have P W report last year. That's what you do. And no matter who you get to do it, it's gonna be the same thing. Even the lease is gonna be the same thing. But it comes down to who's gonna be able to go in there and go room by room to do the cost, that's the, that's probably the job requirement. You got most, I mean, how many structures are you talking about?
We can hire one of our locals to do that if they can get trained to do it. They can do it. No offense to the guys from, that follow these storms around, I'd say put somebody, one of our locals to work, that's just me. And I, I said, I'm not saying that, that has to be learned, that's big about it. She worked in the auditor's office for seven, eight years.
So, truth, I would just suggest that she weigh the odds. Call them, ask them what they cost, ask them what they cost, and I mean, just do, do, do.
See, as a backup, because that was the original plan before, was to get somebody in here like this to go out and do this type of work, instead of waiting till after. So, it's just like doing a hazmat contract, like Garner, we could add.
I must admit, I must have missed the big, when we formulated that plan, but uh, that was suggestive for me to see.
Anyway.
Currently, according to, uh, Brian Bartley, FEMA is looking at two major subdivisions. That's what they are now calling hotspots.
Anybody got a team that can come in here and work this work? We're trying, we're doing everything we can do to do.
This set of.
Set FEMA's forcing down our troops is all I'm getting. Feeling the need to adjourn to take already when you got started.
Unless they get worse at it again. Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm not the cause, no, I'm the cause of the FEMA policy. I'm all, I'm all for Lisa doing that, but I think we also, I think we need to, well, going out for a couple bids for this type of work in the future.
Well, that, how do they handle this liberty count?
I don't know. I think they don't even participate.
Thank you. They've been, they've been a cap audit since twenty twenty.
We could do that information.
Thing, is he doing that?
They've been a severe audit. Well, maybe that's what I was ever thinking about, getting out of the building. But I mean, if we started ours in twenty eighteen, we didn't get with it to twenty twenty one.
So, you gonna check in to it and see what it comes? Really?
Well, yeah, we're approving Lisa. Motion is approved Lisa, right?
Should I just leave?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just, uh, we're not through talking about it yet.
So, I got a motion by who? Who made the motion? I have a motion by. Yeah, I got a motion by Commissioner Mattoon, second by Commissioner Brandon. Any other questions? All up there. Any opposed? Eyes have it, you have it, three, zero. Number twelve, consideration discussion possible vote to approve the modified citizen county regulations for subdivisions in the twelve five point one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, back in November of two thousand nineteen, the court approved pretty major modifications to our, uh, rules. Ninety-nine percent of that change occurred in Appendix Three, which is the, uh, flood plain management and flood patrol ordinance, our plan. Uh, during that plan modification, I missed something. Uh, section five point one point two, if anybody's interested, I have a few extra copies. This section reads as such, breach of containing a hundred, a hundred year flood plain, a minimum of one foot above the flood plain for the finished floor elevation. That is not in accordance with the plan we adopted. It has to be two feet. So, I've suggested a change to incorporate that two feet, and also a slight change in the wording to match the wording that we have in Appendix Three. The reason I missed this is that section five is a checklist for final plaits. It never came up until about a month ago. I was with a client, and he was insisting that he only had to do it one foot, because that's what it said right here. So, we need to fix that, and I suggest that the court approve it.
Well, if our standard was a hundred foot, or one foot instead of two, then I guess it would be.
Yeah, it would be fine.
It would be fine, and then all these things FEMA wanted to check, I guess we could tell them they complied with our rules.
Well, that's.
Why you making us do all this extra homework? The job will be done, in my opinion.
But this, this thing here, this thing here, although history, this has been there for years, actually.
Yes, it has.
But if you read it, the intent of it, because FEMA came out a few years ago, said you have to have that two foot B F B.
Correct.
And that's what we adopted, and it's in Article Five. So, actually, that responsibility falls upon the flood plain administrator when they come to give development. It states two feet B F B as possible. What this referring to here, uh, is on a subdivision flat, at one foot plus one foot. So, that gives you two feet, and is to bring, if you go through the subdivision, Parish County, and you see the house sitting on the hill, and the road's down here, that's the reason why this is written the way it is, because that gives you that two foot, but your contour in the elevation. So, I have no problem with doing it, but, you know, that's, that was the logic for.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, that may not be the intent.
That was the intent when it was done, and that's, you look at a lot of other subdivisions, that's how they did it, because the, the road becomes a chain when it flows. The house they, FEMA, FEMA takes care of houses, engineers take care of houses, they won't do the roads.
So, if I read it, right, it says, one, minimum of one foot above the flood plain for the finished floor elevation. So, there's one foot. And the developed less than one foot above the finished floor shall be prohibited. So, there, that's two feet. That's a really vast, awkward way of wording. They shouldn't just say two foot, and that's what they meant.
And that's what he's saying will clean it up, but it's already in there in section five anyway.
And they're hit, and there won't be any mess communication with a potential clients, and I would have never looked in the checklist to find that. About me, I should have caught it, but I didn't.
Well, it says the same thing. It's just really awkward way of saying it. You gotta sit there and repeat it three times.
But anyway.
Think it's a good idea to clean it up.
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon, second, second by Commissioner Mattoon. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, you have it, three, zero. Out of number fourteen, consideration discussion. Possible vote to approve the variance of five point two five acres out of twenty seven point thirty eight acres with a sixty three point fifty six inch driveway easement for two point six by two acres from track two, Earl Marie Dean, to track three for the remaining twenty point seventy acres.
This is a variance coming off of fifty nine thirty five, and what they're doing, if we separate each property, the issue can remain acreage, would be landlocked, uh, they did it to the right place where the acreage is. So, this right here has got a two acres trap, sixty three feet. Opening all the way down to the lot, so everyone would be a brother.
This is a flat lot, what it is, it's a driveway. All right, approvals they refer to in this flat lot.
Thanks.
So, you were telling me that it's a family, you're selling it to a family here?
I was talking.
So, they're probably exempt anybody. I'm not getting motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mattoon. Second by Commissioner Brandon. We talk about this.
Any small rights claim?
Did you look at it, Claire?
I, I don't think they had it.
If they did, they would have remembered.
No, I don't think so.
It's almost two thousand foot long, that's why I want to have this, get the big two point six acres in the east. How high is the east?
Sixty three point.
Sixty three point.
And correct.
You can't get a acre or two or sixty foot wide, pass for any, you need to put drive an acre. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, you have it, three, zero. Is this a fifty nine forty thousand or something? Right in. We got one coming from both directions. You all are in silence? Uh, sorry, got your stamp stuff. What's that?
Nine sixty seven ninety one.
Sixty seven ninety one. Out of number. Fifteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve modern little for San Francisco County J P number four, Kristen Reeves. San Francisco County J P number three. I have a motion by Commissioner Mattoon, second by Commissioner Brandon. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, you have it, three, zero. Out of number sixteen. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve the appro, approve. Prove the proposal estimate for updated camera system.
Would you budget for a camera system? How are we gonna pay for it?
I agree. It's approved a quote for two hundred four thousand dollars. Then it's a system, it's got so many intricate parts, it's not like, that's on the value. The individual components may be in a, a total system.
We talked with company back in February, they got price, possible shelter in the Lakers, they got price.
So, this is just a question. Does this be twenty two quote five minutes?
I swear. I don't think it's equipped.
Well, it's part of the jail. I think anything that has to do with jail, twenty five minutes, it's between the fifty.
I think it's all under safety.
Safety.
That doesn't mean we can buy it. It's not, we, we have to go out for bids on anything over fifty thousand.
And you're both, do that by the time we go out for bid, on this thing, get it back and read it here.
We ain't got time. We just, we can spend it on this.
I'm like, you know, I think we need to go back out and spray it up.
All for going out for it, but I, I, I'd be really surprised if we can get a bid and, and get it all handled before the deadline soon. But I don't know. Can I get a motion to go out for bids? I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon, second, second by Commissioner Mattoon, to go out for bids on cameras. All we have here is a quote. Somebody might be on quote for. Camera systems of a jail. the jailhouse is 204,702 dollars. We can't, the law don't allow us to just go get a quote and, and spend over 50,000. We have to go out for bids. We don't, we did, we agreed that maybe we need a new system over there, but we got, I'm not gonna be pressing license plates because I tried to circumvent their bidding requirements. And I don't think none of my partners here are gonna do that either. So, ask for a vote. I don't think there is. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, a few not, and three, to zero. Go out for bids. Mr. Hollister, here, did I? No, I, I hadn't been in there. I don't know, we still got a little tax.
I think early this morning, we wasn't powered, so there may be just some sort of
I don't think we want her, she said she had COVID. So did y'all get a copy of the bill's details?
I did about 4:30.
So you have a copy of it?
Did you get it?
I probably did, but I didn't even move it. Maybe.
I didn't send it out.
That was a friend, but she said she came this morning, this fourth, no lie, and she got back home. She's not at her house, but she's still right there, gotta get the bid. The work is running, this tire blinks off real quick and it hits, hits some miles. All right, number seventeen, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve the signing, the contract and review, new figure of production form for employees to sign an open enrollment each year.
This is just for getting permission for me to get payroll.
I don't want payroll, I don't want payroll increase. What are you talking about? So is it still two companies or just the one?
I have not officially heard back on NASA. I don't know if they're gonna be in attendance this year, but they'll have two separate companies.
Air Medical. So how many do we have that are older than that? Any idea?
PHI.
Yeah, either one of them.
I would say 15 or 20, Mesa and PHI.
30, 20, 40. Can we be specific?
The motion is, even talk about that. This is the motion, I'll approve the motion to payroll the duck of each employee that participates in signing the open enrollment to join PHI Mesa.
That's a deal, well, you thank so much. If you ever need for a helicopter ride, here's your code.
So did you hear that he put Mesa in there too, just in case they come? Because they're already on there. I'm sick of that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon to approve the signing, the contract and review payroll deductions form for employees to sign if they want to enroll with PHI or Mesa to provide air medical transfers. Second by Commissioner Matunoz, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, a few not, and three, to zero. Okay, so it says one year membership, $50 rate, and over total, it says blank.
I'll have that number and give the fill-in after opening enrollment.
After opening enrollment, just sign here on the dotted line, right? Nineteen, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve San Francisco County Master Gardeners organization as an affiliate of Texas AgriLife program that's used to be corrupted, located on a live oak west side to create a teaching demonstration.
Hi. I, I have an other handout for you. Thank you, Commissioner Matunoz.
Yes, ma'am.
You know this lady talking in high school?
I did.
She doesn't look old enough to be tucked into that tall, 35-year-old student.
I did. Matter of fact, I'm teaching grandchildren now and other people I talk to, which is weird. Um, I'm here this morning to represent the San Francisco County Master Gardeners. I'm currently serving as their elected president. This is my second and a half go around with the original president of the group, which was interesting year in 2010, which meant to develop bylaws and all the things people dumped me to do. So we started out with 25 members, I think, ended up to have 15. Master Gardeners is an affiliate of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife program. We are a garden club, but not like the social garden clubs. We are an educational branch to A&amp;M. We have to attend 50 hours classroom activity and then we have to do 50 hours of volunteer service in our county. And each year we have to meet certain criteria to remain Master Gardeners. The Master Gardeners are an international group, started actually in Washington State, then ended up with the largest group obviously being in Texas. And we have been waiting, we've worked 10 years with our plant sales, our development to ask the county to create, possible to consider. And that's why I'm here today, just consideration, be thinking about this. I have given you a piece of paper that indicates some properties that Commissioner McEnany and I have been looking at. I would ask you to consider these three properties and we would like to come back again to discuss those specifically with plans for those areas, if you will allow us to do that. And the reason why I'm doing that is I, I have a committee, I don't get to do anything on my own, obviously, and I have a committee of about nine people who are in the development of the demonstration garden program. And they each have bring their own knowledge and their expertise in doing that. When we finally got AgriLife Community Innovation Center, we're excited to let you know that in most places, property is, is allowed by the county to be developed by the Master Gardeners. And if you've ever been to the Master Garden Program in Walker County or Montgomery County, you'll see that at their offices, they're allowed to have a garden area. And the reason being is because we, our mission is to teach gardening things, not just a row garden or whatever. We have all kinds of stuff, rain barrel harvesting, we have experts in just growing tomatoes, just growing roses. It's kind of sometimes like a bunch of peacocks with their feathers in a room because you got all these experts, but we have a lot of practitioners that have done it from the ground up, just growing stuff. They've gone to school, got a lot of information. We're asking you to look at these properties, they're free properties, they're actually right here. Commissioner McEnany walks.
Pardon, but, just looking at it, that's all the frontage we got of this five acres back there.
No, that's the other room. We're going to the back room.
Just tell me, if you're talking about building where these jail areas are, that's not really feasible. Back there in the back corner, back over here.
Well, that's okay, see, we can do that. Here's the deal, the esplanade, one of them's the esplanade, right? See the esplanade?
Then don't look at the property with that, it's all that little park.
No, never been told about that.
Is it, is it, does it make it open or does it have to, need some trees?
Well, it doesn't need to be tree. It's nice to have trees, people don't have to have trees. We were never even suggested that property. We, obviously people asked me about it and I said, I haven't asked you, we certainly can look at that as well. Yeah, towards the back. These two areas, can I go with those right quickly, just to talk about? One is the esplanade right here, it has five trees in it, one of which is.
The storm blew down one of the pine trees and I'm almost thinking, he's talking about, let's take all, I mean the pecans, I said, oh no, we may, we don't want to take down the 100-year-old pecan. Can you work around the pecan?
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying, I've already looked at this property.
And you're talking about beautiful shade, pecan, many pecan paths, that name, those people, I don't think it's ever comes up.
And that area could be a just, remember we do different kinds of gardens. You've got flower gardens, you've got prairie type gardens, you've got what's called a ziruscape, where you put rocks and just dump water, you allow the natural waters, it's all kinds of things. You have to look, once the property becomes available, we can discuss what to go there. And that's what I'd like to bring back with me, actual, if you allow me to look at these three properties, or Commissioner Matunoz just said something about the head start in the park there. We don't have to have trees, it's nice to have trees. And two things happen.
When you first started talking about garden, I thought we was doing real crap.
Absolutely.
Do that in the back room.
No, demonstration gardens are just that, they demonstrate. I gave you a piece of, a little intro to that and it demonstrates to everybody how to do this, but wanted to be, just doing native plants, things that grow here well, things that grow naturally here. Another thing could be a vegetable or flower garden where you can grow profit. And it wouldn't be, it's not a whole acre, it's small sections. If you can imagine, if you've ever been to Miami County, you walk in there and it's, here's this garden, here's that garden, here's that, there's small old gardens and a greenhouse. And that's been the big thing with Commissioner McEnany and I, he said, well, we don't want the greenhouse just sticking out there. That's why we asked for that back part of this five acres. If you goes down west side, return, come here live up, go down west side, it'd be right there next to the home that's there. I think that's Mr. Leggins probably, and I'm sure who's.
Behind where Bill Burnett is.
Bill Burnett. It's, look, this side of it goes down beside him.
If you go down outside.
West side.
You know, I'm talking about outside.
Okay, come in.
That takes you to the west end of the property.
Yes, sir.
I get, I'm sure the mayor knows, I believe that if you follow the actual easement, the street goes right through that big pond.
It did. I looked at the cat, I don't, I don't think I put, yes, I did. These actually show the easements on it, the catch on. And I thought, hmm, that looks exactly like one right through the property. But anyway, that would all have to be worked out when we get on the ground, actually walk in it, using this counter and all that, your wife. And besides the esplanade, there is a nice piece of property right here on the back of this building that could be developed. You have parking lot ending and then you have the property to the easement, to the road easement. That's not bad. You don't want to put a greenhouse there.
No.
You want to put a greenhouse for two reasons where it's not quite obvious. Obviously, people think it's not beautiful, but also it's got a lot of valuable stuff in it. So you don't want it sticking out in the middle where someone without some sort of protection go and get things in from it once you're grown. Why do we need a greenhouse? Because we propagate all of our stuff for ourselves. Last year, we, all the members propagated another, over 700 plants and we made something like four or $5,000 selling things that we each had grown. We didn't go out and buy quote unquote any plants. So that's part of your learning, that's part of your experience being Master Gardeners. So we do need a greenhouse and we're hurting for that. We need, because no one, we, each of us have individual greenhouses, but that's not as good as it is. Like, everybody come there, learn how to repropagate something, could teach, we're trying to teach, we're there to take that. And certainly could look at the head start, property between the head start and the park, there's definitely no shade there, there's definitely nothing there. Might be a blank slate to develop.
We may have to expand the impound, the impound was completely trapped.
Absolutely. I do understand that. There's, I don't believe it's, it's probably maybe one or two of them sell, are selling it. Lays on.
I can now say anything to you about the ranch, the project, project out here in Kansas. This, this year, one of the projects they're gonna do, they're gonna take on 20 acres, turn it into a community garden type, bigger one like this.
Yes, sir. Who is that?
It's probably Sage Center, right? They're gonna be putting two little shades.
Yes, sir. That was not said to us. But I can find out, I can give you one, I appreciate it.
That one little strip looks like, it must be the esplanade, that's right in the middle.
It is, about 100 stories.
Certainly, I'm not supportive of anything that removes a big 150-year-old.
We would never, we, unless.
I don't think y'all are.
Absolutely not. Matter of fact, when we looked at it, we said it'd be perfect to leave us.
Well, that screws it up and, and.
Make flowers, make it pretty, little fence around it. That could be, that is, actually that is 25, I believe it's 25 by 225 feet. That's a pretty good sized piece of land, believe it or not. We have to worry about the easements and the asphalt on the sides. I mean, there's a lot of things you have to consider. That's why I'd like to come back with some plans, so it's more definitive. But I didn't want to start any of this until I had your approval or hand or consideration, is all I'm looking for, because now I've got to get people going. They said we probably, we might could use this, how do we want to use this? What would we use for? This kind of stuff. And I guess I could go out and look.
Those two blocks that are.
Yeah.
In the west edition there.
That probably.
That's probably, when we sit here and voted to buy this, one of the things that I, I expect to see there at some point is, when we added on to the jail both times, we, nothing but jail cells, we didn't add out any office space and they needed, they need a place to put their officers, squad rooms, blah, 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 law enforcement. That's what I perceive going right there. But there's lots of room to work something in. I wish, and those esplanades, that's a, that'd be a place to start as far as I'm concerned. What you want is to, permission to, to kind of move forward and do some more, you don't want to do a bunch of planning and then.
Absolutely not.
And say, what are you talking about? Get out of here.
Well, I wanted you to understand the concept too, of why we're gonna do, why we're asking for you to consider us doing this. At this point, having done this now for, what, 14 years, we need a place where we can call our home. We used the community center garden, the city is just now, they needed the community center. We're going to be right now.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, sir. The city of Post-Ritz is that now.
It's a small space, but it's.
Well, it needs a lot of tender loving care, not the gardens, but the building itself.
I was in Niagara Falls over the weekend, and here comes a guy, we're sitting there, they're having a festival, and here comes a little lady in a buggy, she's got a thing to water and she's going around to all the plants and they got plants everywhere, kind of like, I thought, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could have, you know, to help beautify it, but we could still have anything in place.
Absolutely.
It's a start.
Yes, sir. And that garden there is, is really enhanced the building. It's helping to rent away to the climate. It's an inexpensive, we won't use cheap, it's an inexpensive place where everyone can come and use it. And that's what it's centered, the goal of the city, my understanding, having city in some of those meetings, is that it's going to remain that and just keep it pretty.
I'm sure entertain a motion to let you move forward, not committing in stone to any particular spot, but we will support your endeavor.
I appreciate it. Well, we will do that and we probably will come back in August, if that's okay, plan on that and we will have.
I think the esplanade would be. I think the esplanade would be, that would go right on the flagpole and then we'll figure out, once we look at your...
Actually, why?
Figure out what else, where else we could...
All right, see?
I'm making a motion to, if we're going out, if we still take the name process and bring back.
Yes, sir. Have a motion by Commissioner Brandon, a second by Commissioner Matunno. This, in the west edition, that's about there, I think that's where for the time being, we put a little fence there and put X-ray handles. My big brain foresees that being moved somewhere to the back if we ever get off the ground on building this here, like a suitable office complex.
That's why I asked for the other end of it.
Yeah, yeah.
We could go 40 by 300, it's a huge piece of property that we could never physically develop, but we could certainly put a greenhouse back there, see where, as you're talking about, where pines and live oak comes into kind of, and then pine does...
I don't know what that middle street is there.
Alpines, oh, the other one? I don't either, Alpine's one of them.
I think it's all, Alpine's on the end and then live oak's on the other end, that middle one comes out by where the dentist office is, but here, it's all grown up, there's no, it's not even cleared.
Not at all.
So just Bill Leggett, get to this property, buy that proposed road. I propose that.
He owns both a lot.
Yes, he does. This came from the Parker District, I believe this is...
Is that his exit zone?
No, he comes in off the pine.
So then, I guess she probably knows somebody at the city that could abandon that right way and you could have that entire right way in case you're leaving now.
Talking about the right way to come south.
If that were to happen, legally speaking, the owners to either side and split it, but that don't mean they couldn't do what you want to do.
Right. We would like to try to stay on property that's already, that belongs to you because that's our, that's part of our mission. I mean, we work with the county, we're the extension agency, we work with, we are an affiliate of yours. But yeah, there's always considerations.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, two negatives, three to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 20, consideration discussion possible vote approved and deny the first petition for the creation of San Jacinto County ESD District number two. We had a public hearing here the last time we met, I believe, and had lots of input on it, there's been a lot of discussion going on and so forth. And item number 20, 21, I also received a new petition to kind of modify this area. But I guess we need to act on item number 20 before we can get into 21. Anybody want to speak on 20?
Morning, Jake. Lauren. My name is Lauren Ross, I'm a resident of Waterway, I've been a resident for about 10 years. I'm also a registered voter in San Jacinto County. I'm here on behalf of the property owners of Waterway that are in the Waterway Utility District. And what we're asking for on item 20 is for you guys to take an effort down vote based on the petition that we submitted back in April, I think April 4th of this year.
Is that, you wanted to, ah, if I understand right?
And then the first one, or the second?
I mean, if you voted, if you voted yes on the first one, then we're good, but if you deny it, then we'd like to go to 21.
Well, we talked back and forth, there's lots of discussion, as you know, about feasibility and we had some landowners that own probably two-thirds of the land area, maybe not, maybe not the same value, but anyway, there was opposition. And if we, this one does go, I think the second proposal would please every landowner out there. Again, that's what we, that's the hopeless task that we're faced with, trying to make everybody happy. So, but that is a term plan, break, everybody. You want this and deny this?
Yes.
I'll make the most of this, now. I have a motion by Commissioner Matunno, a second by Commissioner Brandon to deny the petition. Any comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, two negatives, three to zero. 21, consideration discussion and possible vote. Consider the petition filed July 2nd, 2024. Y'all brought in the thing about 10 minutes till, my secretary, we jumped through some hoops to get it all put on the agenda because I was going out of town the next day for the fourth. So anyway, we got her in there, I put, let me finish, I should finish reading, for this, creation of San Jacinto County ESD District number two and set a date, time and place for public hearing to consider the petition for August 14th. Now that petition was put in there, 2024, 10 a.m. at this location, 265 Live Oak. It's come to my attention that 14th may or may not have been the right day.
That's correct, it's Wednesday and it should have been August 7th.
It's all good.
I'm just...
Tell me what date you want.
I'm in correction after it was already due, so August 7th, we're good with, if that's, if that's okay with all of you.
Now, we're in that position, I'd probably already have sent my stuff to the newspaper. Does it say August 7th on the notice that's sent to the newspaper?
It is, it does.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
It does. I will tell you that I haven't seen the paper printout, so I don't know if it's in there, but it's already done.
That's all you can do.
And I paid for it myself, so it's, everything's good.
It probably was over $150, is that?
I think it's $10,000, but that's...
$10,000, just make a check out the lease.
Exactly.
You want to put Calco or Haven on that?
I'm putting slash fruit soccer, I thought that was Dells.
Well, y'all both can go in silver coats.
You're in there too.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon.
I'll save that motion for August 7th. That's the only thing that needs to be changed.
Okay, well, that's all right. And that is a commission court date.
It is.
Yeah, that was the, the idea. Anyway, any other discussion? We're going to put August 7th. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, two negatives, three to zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's already, for the record, it's already on the way, it may have, it's got to be published two, two times out of the three month, three week period or something, right?
Correct.
Yeah, good. It couldn't have happened that quick if you not have been diligent and got her done.
I'm a professional hoot jumper.
Appreciate that. Do we need to provide it to the, to the book for the sheriff's posting? That's already in the paper. Technically, the statute says that the clerk shall do it and the sheriff shall deliver it to the paper, but that, those rules can be delegated. In probate cases, the statute say the same thing, but you, once your notice done, a lot of times the lawyers do them and then the clerk just gets the, got the hospital to sign off, which is, we're all kind of working together, you might say. Are you just on that sheriff's letter? You get to do some things like that. All right. Well, I guess we'll see y'all on August 7th. So what's the, what's the damage look like up there in Waterway for its trees? Everywhere?
We don't have any, but...
Yeah, I hear you.
Marcus has about 7,840 of them there.
Oh, I'm going to go, it's, it's, it's over.
I pushed a few of my farm tractor up and cutting them off, stayed out with myself. I thought, I should go get to my house and fix my lights if I don't get my tail out there. So everybody's bitching in and...
I think Marcus and Jamie cut trees for three, two, three days out there, so they...
So, so just to let Jamie know, we were cutting those trees and we got it open, you pulled up and helped me. And I appreciate that. I went, cut that next one off that you told me was too big for me and then I headed home and met a guy and I said, you can go out that way. And he come back and said, I can't, it's trees on the road.
Yes, last night we had another one come down, big one, right on the dangerous flying court.
For a little, I thought it was going to be a long, much needed soaking rain, you should do this much damage. It's, it's, this is, this, it gets close to, I don't know if it's bad as regularly, it gets close, I mean, it's a lot of damage.
But the 50-year-old, I don't think we had any on houses.
No, we did.
Oh, we had one?
We had two, two houses.
Oh, that's, that's real bad.
They were kind of leaders, they worked, they worked like...
So the worst place in our precinct that I've seen so far is Lake Shore Drive off the 156. And all of those shores?
Yeah.
It's horrible. It's going to take me a week to get it hauled off to the road.
Just on the roads.
Drop that in the ground, check that out. Free haul. I'll make a comeback right here.
So just for the record, the governor, not the governor, active governor, Dan Patrick, signed the declaration, I believe, before, if he got there on the second or third, second I believe, and then we filed a local declaration, actually filed a district law. Anyway, all that's in place. Whether or not we get a theme under league or federal government, depends on Matthew Blake, who can do the dust on them all, that's the debate for the last one. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 22, consideration discussion possible vote approved, San Jacinto County historical permission blood drive, July 27th. Sometimes they come and have these things and they just ask me, would be all right to set a blood drive thing up there on the county property. Sometimes if I didn't have time, I just said, yeah, go ahead. I said, we're meeting, I can't imagine anybody proposing that. I said, if they do it, you can put it over and put them all... Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Matunno. Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, two negatives, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. And you promise if I give blood, that they will, they will stop calling me?
No, I can't promise.
Sorry.
We don't have a little call list.
Block it. I didn't just give it every time we checked, because I took too much medicine, they got blood. Okay. All we got left is bills and matters of duty, because there's some personnel issues that makes our executive section...
Yes, sir.
What happens?
Hey, let's short, if you want to check it out.
Okay.
Right before you get out of state of the street.
Okay, thank you.
You just go, you got tire running from my hat.
Let's, the record reflects at 10:25 a.m., it's come to my attention, treasurer has some personnel issues, achieving life expectancy, restricted sessions under item, under section 551074, personnel matters to deliberate appointment, appointment evaluation, reassigned duty, this one or this one, a public officer or employee over here complained, charged against an officer or employee. We're going to adjourn regular session and discuss that item with treasurer this time.